Meeting order. Councilman Woods, would you please give us the indication?
Heavenly Father, once again, you allow us to assemble together, Lord, as a unit. Father, we partake in this meeting, Lord, let all your minds be spoken and let everybody come on one accord. Father God, everything we do, Lord, we do it in your sight. We add this in your son, Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you. All right, first on the list is the city of Bennett's for participation in the recreation[32.82][32.82]initiatives.
I put it by everybody's desk. They've sent us notes saying that they, there's no consensus to move forward with their participation in the couple of things that y'all presented about.
Kind of vague. So, pretty much what they're saying that they're not gonna...
Well, they, I watched, they had a work session and I watched it and y'all might want to watch it, but it was a little bit back and forth about details, but it came down to it. The general vibe was, we don't have the money to participate, so we don't want to talk, we don't want to go forward with talking about it anymore. So, I don't know, you know, I wasn't at the meeting, you know, I guess if we wanted to pursue it further, we, some of us, all or some of us could go to the meeting and try again, but that's the message that came from the administrator.
Well, hopefully, at least, at least on record, we're showing us reaching out into a partnership and they're open, or we're open, to accept whatever they come to us on in the future. So, any other questions?
What's the alternative plan now?
Well, we've already voted to pursue what we got and we going, you know, we voted to go with what that and anything that the city was gonna add was just gonna be a bonus.
I don't think that's an accurate statement. In my conversation with some city officials, they weren't necessarily happy with what we proposed as accounting, and that's one of the reasons for the apprehensions. And I think, you know, we really need to take a hard look at, you know, what we've proposed and make sure that we are using these monies in the best interest of our county. I think, you know, yeah, we voted on some stuff that the language might be, but we really need to take a hard look, because I've heard from a lot of people and they're not happy with this proposal because it's not going to fully invest and enhance the citizens of Marlboro County. And I think we really need to take a hard look at what we're proposing and speak to your constituents and see if they are on board, because these are the lives that we're impacting with this gift that we've been given. And I think we really do need to take a hard look at what we're proposing.
And this brings us to number two, which is the, and I don't mean to why we are having this meeting, because we've already, in November unanimously voted to purchase the properties that, of the four properties that we, and do what we had to do to close out this action. And then, and that was unanimously voted on, and then in December, with the budget detail, it was voted on, with you being Dr. Johnson, the only one that objected.
And Mr. Chairman, may I have a thought? I want to emulate the record state that for me, any votes or anything prior to my jet might coming on this board, I was, I could not vote on any of that.
Yes, ma'am.
So, I did not have a vote in any, in any of the meetings prior to my first meeting.
Yes, ma'am, we'll make note of that.
And I don't think it's an accurate statement that we voted to purchase, because we voted to pursue, we did not vote to purchase, and so for us to have a budget, you know, and I look back at what we proposed in that, you know, December meeting, we proposed to start an operating budget before we actually signed the contract to purchase, you know, the golf course. That's putting the cart before the horse. I don't think that's an accurate statement that we actually voted to purchase the golf course. I think we gave Mr. Mullin permission to...
Dr. Johnson.
Can I...
Yeah, excuse me, go ahead.
We gave Mr. Mullin permission to pursue the option of purchasing the golf course, which comes back to council. Let's say those people said they wanted a million dollars for the golf course. That comes back to council and then we vote whether we want to engage in that. We gave Mr. Mullin the authority to engage the owners of the golf course, not to purchase the golf course, in my understanding.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a point. These, all of our meetings are recorded, and I have gone back, as several of y'all, I'm hoping everyone has gone back and reviewed, especially the November, I'm sorry, the October, November and December meetings. There's no question on, on the vote on that, and we, we've been working on this for a year and...
To pursue, Mr. Chairman.
Nope, I'm still talking, and, but Dr. Johnson, you are more, I mean, in the right to go get legal action, and with you and what other council members would like to, that feel that way, and see what course of action we can take.
Chairman.
Yes?
I'm in the same boat with you. I do not, I do not know why we're even discussing this matter today. In October, November and December, we had numerous meetings, we had the workshop, it was open to the public, all our meetings were advertised, so the public was here. We had the proposals that we wanted to move forward with, four of them, I guess in October, we sit back in that workshop and approved them. We came out of a workshop, came in open meeting, and we approved everything. We've had at least three votes of seven to one, whether you abstain or vote against or whatever, that's not gonna change the vote. The minutes are not gonna change the vote. The history is there. This council, seven people, voted to go through with this project, and you gave Mr. Mullin, the administrator, the authority to go ahead and move ahead with what we approved in that workshop. And I don't, I don't know really what, what there is to discuss. You know, a seven to one vote is never gonna change, other than maybe the one vote, whether it's an abstention or a vote no. But it's not gonna change the outcome, it's not gonna change the history that this council made a consensus effort, seven of us, to move forward with this project, and that's where we've been at since December, but a little bit of adjustment in the, in December was part of it, and that was the deal with the setting a budget for the operation of the golf course. And also looking at the fact that we know that it's probably in the initial run, it's gonna lose money, which all projects do and stuff, and this is no different. Mr. Mullin with his work into the project, he allowed for that, that we were gonna lose some money initially and stuff, but in the long run, I mean, I really truly don't know what we're discussing this morning, because this council has voted on at least three occasions, seven to one, to move ahead with this project, and as far as I'm concerned, it's over with. You know, we move ahead and we do what's in the best interest of the community. Now, I've had some conversation about the number of people that play golf and all that. Playing golf is just a part of what the golf course is about. The golf course, and initially when we all talked about this thing, we needed a centerpiece to build a project around. It's 125 acres in that project and stuff. A lot of land that we can do stuff with down the road or what, in phase two or whatever, but you got to have a centerpiece to build it around. Probably every citizen in this county has talked to me and every one of us about having a nice restaurant in Marlboro County. We have the opportunity, as all the golf courses in the PD, you can get out and you can ride. Every golf course in the PD has a nice restaurant built up around it, so we have that opportunity to do the same thing here in Marlboro County. Another thing, industry, look, which is what we're all looking for. Industry looks to counties and stuff, then one thing, they look at schools and all that, but they look at, they, golf courses are high on the list that industry looks at, because a lot of industry executives and their workers play golf. We have something there to present to industry when we get this project through, a nice golf course with a nice meeting venue and also a nice restaurant. I think that everything about this thing is, is gonna be a positive for the county, both from the standpoint, if we bring industry in, they're gonna bring in money and invest in this community and all that, and that's what it's all about, is presenting things that will sell this community, you know, and we certainly need to sell it. And I just think that this is a golden opportunity for us to pull together, and we did pull together. Seven of us voted to go ahead and move forward this project, and I think that's where we need to go today.
Mr. Chairman.
I'm sorry, Mr. Trump.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Robert Rule Ward gives us a remedy for any vote that we, that we take. Anybody that votes, if the vote passes, anybody that votes in the affirmative can bring it up at the very next meeting and request that it be revisited. It's there, that's our remedy. Doesn't mean that it's gonna change anything, but it means that it can be brought back up for discussion, and that's why we're here today.
Mr. Chairman.
So, we're, am I, so we're in the right to do that. And you all know, like I said before, I am a proponent of the water attraction, and I've been a proponent for the golf course, and I am a proponent for the golf course today. However, I am not ready to spend, I wish that we could go back and rethink the budget part of it, because the golf course is right now running, it's up, it is operating. So, to spend seventy-five percent of the money on that, when we know the city is not gonna fifty-fifty with us, dollar for dollar with us, we can take some of these money, we can delay some of the, the construction or the redoing it, and put that, those funds other places. We can either, you can, a splash pad, that's a slap in the face, but you can put some of those funds to there, instead of doing all of the renovations that, that are required, you know, of this. I think the renovations should be moved to a phase two, you understand, instead of being a phase one, you know, but the project, I'm in favor of the golf course, because that's, that was part of it. If we could purchase the golf course, build the water attractions around the golf course and the lake, it would all flow. That was the whole thought process. Am I right?
Yeah, that's right.
Okay, so, but however, things have, things have changed. We did this budget here that I'm looking at, your, the final budget for the rest stop is one point three million dollars. The final budget for the golf course renovation is two point seven million dollars.
The budget that we voted on was in the December...
Right, this is it, right here.
Yeah, and we voted on that, that those figures were in that...
Right, but I'm talking about now, but see, we, we voted anticipating that the city would go dollar for dollar on one aspect. Now, if we, our budget for it would be, what, six hundred and fifty thousand dollars, if I'm reading that right, downtown?
Yeah, I think, I think this helps you know kind of the our part, their part, and then this part in the December vote is all our part, just on the golf. So, yes, sir, you're correct. The blue, the blue is the county portion.
Right, right. You see, so you're talking about two point four million dollars going to, towards the, towards the golf course, when the initial price of the golf course is six hundred and fifty thousand dollars, with the endowment that's coming to us, five hundred thousand, leaving the county with a hundred and fifty thousand dollar balance, that's, that's a good investment, in my, in my opinion.
Yes, but I...
The rest of, the rest of it, the renovations, I just don't think is warranted, and that's my opinion.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, talking about that, as far as what to do and when to move forward, and talking about Robert Rule's order, on November fifteenth, I mean, I guess all of us doing our homework, we've got to look, we had to look our way back, almost, we start talking January, February, March, April, June, July, but on November fifteenth, whenever we come out of the work session, here was kind of the, the motion to move forward is to put it together. Says the island, number one, it says the items are designated as phase one for action pursuant to the details presented in the workshop. A is purchase and improvements of Marlboro Country Club, B, the design and construction of splash pad facility, C, design and construction of boardwalk parking area on Beauty Spot Road Shoreline of Lake Paul Wallace, and to pursue partnership with the Lake Paul Wallace Authority to fund the project. D, the acquisition of property, design and construction, a rest stop food truck court on Broad Street. E, allocation of funds for image concerns in the county, including those in the municipalities. Next thing is authorize staff to develop any legal documents or arrangements required to further these actions, which would include entering into contracts or agreements to purchase the properties necessary for the projects. Direct staff to set up meetings with the potential financial partners, included but not limited to Lake Paul Wallace Authority, the City of Bennett's Field and the Marlboro County School District. Direct staff to engage the services of special legal counsel to advise county on the establishment of a special purpose tax district that would generate dedicated revenue for recreation tourism issue ongoing. Chairman Midgeley asked all council members if they understood the motion. The chairman then asked if there was a motion pursuant to Mr. Mullin's recommendation. Motion made by Ms. Cory Plato, seconded by Mr. Verdon, to approve the motion presented by Mr. Mullin. Vote in favor, unanimous, motion carried. That was on November fifteenth. In December, we voted to approve those minutes.
With the budget. That is an accurate reflection. That information still has to come back to council to vote to approve the contract. We haven't seen any contract, we haven't seen how much money that, all of this stuff is going to actually, fiscal money. One of our main engagements of the golf course was because there was a proposed endowment from the Love Foundation, which I'm looking at here saying possibly five hundred thousand dollars. That was one of the selling points, to get members of council, if we, if the, the golf course is gonna be six hundred and fifty thousand dollars, if the Love Foundation was gonna contribute five hundred thousand dollars, in our estimation, we was gonna be only obligated to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to the purchase of that golf course. That's what the selling point, when I'm looking here, you're talking about possibly, you know, five, that, that money could be up fifty thousand when it comes down to it. What I'm saying is, even though we approved to give Mr. Mullin and staff the authority to go out and seek, that information still has to come back to council to approve and adopt when we get contractual information in our hand, where we can look over and make sure that we are doing our due diligence in the fiduciary responsibilities of this county. All of that is accurate and correct, but we still haven't seen any contract, we still don't know the final price of, of, of how much these things are gonna purchase. So, all that could be said, and we can come back and they can say they want more, and we cannot approve what we approved in this minute right here. You all are saying we approved, we approved to give Mr. Mullin the authority to go out on council's behalf to seek these opportunities. That information still has to come back to us as the governing body to approve fully for him to execute. That's what I'm saying.
Dr. Johnson, we gave, we didn't ask him to go seek, we told him to go...
It still has to come back to council to approve, Mr. Chairman.
We did not say that in here at all, and it's very clear, and I urge the public to go look at all of our meetings and, and come up with your own opinion, because I've only heard great things of getting the golf course.
Mr. Chair, may I speak?
Yes, sir.
The, I mean, listening to everybody saying, we all grown adults in no business, there's no one that would conduct a six hundred and fifty thousand dollar purchase in the right mind without looking at contract. You know, it does our job, you know, if we approve, yes, but yet, Mr. Land, do you have the contract? Has the contract been written up yet? I'm asking a question.
Yeah.
Okay, and we, the contract, if the contract been written up, the contract should have been at our desk, at our proposal, at the resident council meeting, so we can look at it, make sure everything is perbedal, what we discussed. And the only thing Dr. Johnson is saying, the main thing he's saying, and I agree, and y'all probably agree too, if somebody give, you said buy a house, and I said, Jason, I'm gonna buy your house for seven, seventy thousand dollars, and we just write it off, but nobody looked at the contract, then we go to the lawyer for the lawyer to do the deal, and now Jason want eighty-five thousand, well, you already agree, Anthony, you gotta give me my money now. That's what we saying. You know, yeah, we give Mr. Mullin all the rights and his staff, but still, he gotta bring back to us and say, look, here's the contract, read over it and let's vote on it, let me sign it, and they do the deal. But if you don't have nothing in black and white, we don't know what's on that black and white paper. Now, when we get the contract, Mr. Andrew get the contract, bring it back to us, and the contract, we think six hundred and fifty thousand, if it's seven hundred thousand, we stuck. We gotta get that man seven hundred thousand dollars, because we signed the contract, but we didn't see the contract to sign.
This is exactly why we have Mr. McLeod.
Yeah, but, but we don't, we did not see it. We paid, he worked for us, we don't work for him. We, they got, they got the contract to us, and you talk to anybody in the community, you got businessmen vetting this, in this place right here, they do the same thing. They would say, look, let me see the contract before I sign.
What we voted for was to give them full authority to go ahead with that.
But we still got to...
We can't do that, we're still responsible for the contract.
We can look at it, we want to, one thing, we, as, as a council, I don't know why we in a big hurry, 'cause one, if somebody's speaking, let that person, whether it's Anthony, whether the chairman, whether Mr. Odom, Ms. Lawson, let them finish, and then they say, Chairman, I am through, then you interrupt. You know, we are getting so beside ourselves, trying to prove a point. And also, we are trying to say, let, do business as business people do. We are, Marlboro County's a business. We are a business. We might be eight individuals, but we form one business, and we do not seem to respect each other when we talking. You know, I have, I have, I try not to intervene and jump the gun. Mr. Blackman is the same way, he don't jump in, but see, like, everybody, we, we all there, tell somebody that I'm talking, boom, they jump in and, you know, like, I can get my point in. Your point gonna be made and said. Only thing I'm just saying is that Mr. Andrew got the contract, Mr. Mullin got the contract, bring up the contract, let all of us look at it, and make sure apples are apples, like we do bid contract, when Mr. Doug do bid contract, they make sure apples is apples, oranges is oranges. We will make sure that what we said, what we thought about in the previous meeting is in black and white. Black and white don't lie. When you see it in, in black and white, and they say, okay, we can move forward. It's, it's a simple, that's a simple thing. We worry about, what we gave Mr. Mullin to do, Mr. Mullin worked for us, Mr. McLeod worked for us. So, if we got it in black and white, we see it, what's the problem?
Mr. Chairman.
I am finished, you, you done get your words in, but go ahead.
Go ahead, then.
No, sir, no, sir, you don't, I, I just, I just said the same thing three minutes ago about interrupting, and you went on interrupting, you go ahead.
When you stop, I'm now determined, Anthony, you still got four.
Would I say, I don't have no problem with that, when I get through talking, I tell the chairman, I'm done, okay? You know, but anyway, I think that was something we all need to practice, when we get through talking, just say, Mr. Chairman, I'm done with my statement, then somebody go in. It, it is cursory, that's all.
You still got four.
No, sir, Mr. Chairman, I finished with my comment at this time.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, the original price of the golf course was much higher than the six fifty, the people that owned it. We, our administrators dealt with them, we didn't, we didn't like the original price, and we came down to price that we thought was a fair price compared to the other golf courses around the PD area that have sold over the last few years. We instructed Mr. Mullin that that was what we wanted to pay for the golf course, and with a seven to one vote, we gave him the authority to go out, him and Mr. McLeod, and make the deal with the family that owns the golf course, and that's what we did. There should not be any more discussion on that. If there was some discussion on it, it might have been like a four-four vote or whatever, it wouldn't have passed and stuff. But the vote was seven to one, that we voted to instruct Mr. Mullin and Mr. McLeod to make the deal for six hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and, and I don't think he really, some talk about the Love Foundation, Alan Love's got a commitment of a half million dollars, you can rest assured, that half million dollars is still there. But I, I don't think there should be any more discussion about the golf course. We instructed him to go out, pursue it, he did exactly what our instruction, and you right, the contract, contract's not gonna be, it's gonna be on paper, it's not gonna be any different than what we said we wanted. We wanted to pay six hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the golf course, and that's the deal that they completed.
Mr. Chairman, all of that could be accurate, but we still, as a council, Mr. Mullin is not a council member, he's not a government official, he works at the discretion and the direction of us as council members. Even though we gave him that authority, in twenty twenty-one, we gave Mr. Mullin the authority to engage Carolina Bank, and we gave him that authority, we agreed on a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar purchase that I objected to, and when it came back to, it was a bad purchase, Mr. Mullin came back to us, informed us, and we engaged accordingly. We are the governmental body of this county, we can't continue to defer our responsibilities out to someone who is not, who is an employee of the county. We are the governmental body that govern the people's money, we speak for the people, and when we continue to defer our responsibility, I'm not sure if we incompetent, I'm not sure if we lazy, I'm not sure if we just don't wanna do it, but we can't continue to defer our responsibilities out. And, and, and when these decisions are made, we looking at each other like, uh, 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 we didn't know what was going on. We gave Mr. Mullin that authority to, to engage on behalf of council with the, in my estimation, with the, the obligation that Mr. Mullin comes back to us and we vote to finally approve what had been presented through these contracts.
Dr. Johnson, that's a good point about the Carolina Bank. We, we based our opinion completely on Mr. Mullin's...
But we should, and we should do our own homework and responsibility, but you, you just said something that is not appropriate.
I'm talking, but we based our opinion to back out of that contract on our staff, our administrator's opinion. I, we, we told, we gave him the specific instruction, if anything changed in what we authorized him to do, I trust our administrator to come back to us and advise us, as he did on the Carolina Bank bill. And, but we gave him full power to execute the contract in the, in the minutes, it's all there, and we cannot change history, we voted for it.
Yes, we can.
If y'all, if y'all are saying, if y'all are saying that now, I'm sorry, but y'all must not have done your homework, and this should have been brought up before now, and I think it's an embarrassment to council that y'all are bringing it up now, and, Councilman...
Mr. Chairman, Doc Johnson's right, we are the governing body of Marlboro County, and we make the decisions of the county for the people of this county, that's why they elect us and stuff, and we made those decisions on this project, seven to one. Mr. Mullin is definitely an employee of the county. We operate with a council administrator, former governor in, in Marlboro County. The council makes the decisions, and we hand it down to the administrator to carry out the day-to-day operations and the operation of any decision that we make, and that is exactly what happened in this project. We voted seven to one, we gave the full authority for Mr. Mullin to pursue what we had voted on, and I'm still sitting here this morning wondering why we're back in this meeting again and why we're bringing it up again. The decisions have been made, and like I said, I, I don't think that anybody appears dumb, and I don't think he didn't pay attention to what was going on. We knew full well what we were voting on, if not, there would have been a descending vote or several descending votes. That's not the way it was. It was a seven to one, almost unanimous vote for us to pursue this project, and I really and truly think, you know, we're, we're wasting the public's time out here right now and, and our time too, when a decision that was made with plenty of forethought, plenty of advertising in the newspaper when our meetings were gonna be for the public to come, and the public came. And, and, and like I said, I just, I'm sitting here this morning thinking that, you know, we're just relatively don't know why we're here.
I think that's, Mr. Chairman, I think that's a part of the problem. We just wanna come here on Tuesday, and that's it. We don't wanna engage any other time. Why we here? Because we got seven million dollars of gifted money that we are responsible for, and if we, as council members, if, if the citizens don't think that we're spending that money wisely, that's why we're here. That's why we're here engaging, that's what your job and your responsibility when you sign on as a, as a government, civil servant. You sign up to do exactly what you're doing right now, to sit in meetings and engage. I don't care if we voted ten times, if we come back and we have apprehensions, we come back as a council and we engage and we discuss them. Just because we made one decision and one vote doesn't mean that we can't come back as a council and discuss the decision that we made. If you get one opinion from a doctor, if you want another opinion, you go to another opinion, you get another opinion. We're getting another opinion because I honestly don't think that we gave Mr. Mullin the authority to, 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 to do council's job. We gave him the authority to do his job, but that information still, I repeat, has to come back to council for us to approve when we get a contract, and if we don't feel, let's say we, we made that decision out of haste, which I think that we did, because of the, the discussion, that we really made that decision out of haste, because we wanted to get something done, and that was the language, we need to get something done. We made a decision out of haste, that we can go back and revisit.
Dr. Johnson, we can...
Can I finish, Mr. Chairman?
You're repeating yourself.
But can I finish?
And you're the one that was against this, you were against this, and I think you're still saying that you're against it, and we recognize that.
Can I finish?
Yes, you can finish.
Thank you. If we make a decision, and we determine that decision is not accurate or, or, or a great decision, it's our responsibility to come back and revisit. I'm sorry that this is a waste of time for you, Councilman Odom. I'm sorry that this is a waste of time for you, but it's not a waste of time, because we got money that I don't... Because we got money that I don't think is being used for the full benefit of our county. This is supposed to be a recreation project, and there's very little in this project to do with recreation. Very, very little to do with recreation, so we're having this as a recreation project. And we looking at the things that we have on the table, and, 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 and we can't come out and say, you know what? This may not be a recreation project, let's revisit what we've done. I don't think this is a waste of time. We can do what we, 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 we wanna do, but I'm in favor of, 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 of looking at this decision again and making sure that when those contracts come back, then we vote to finalize and approve these measures that we've engaged on these different aspects of this recreation project that we've engaged in.
Dr. Johnson.
I'm done, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. It is well within your right to see, legal counsel, and, and, and you can, and that's how things, that's how things are done.
You don't want that, man. Just go ahead and, 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 and don't address me, address. Let Mr. Mullin, he's being recognized, don't address me.
Can I, can I say the thing? The only direction that count that I have and staff has is what y'all vote on, okay? So you may disagree with what you, what your perception of what was voted on, but we acted on that. And we had numerous meetings. We also had one or two executive sessions where a lot of details were discussed about the contract. So it put staff in a terrible position of, well, I don't really know what position it puts us in, because we're trying to act on what you all want. And the vibe of the November meeting was, let's rock and roll and move forward with this. A motion was created with everybody there, and we moved forward with that. So, um, I hope, I understand it may be a change of heart or an opposition to a particular component of it. But I would disagree on the record that we've done anything that you have not authorized us to do. In November, the, the, the ordinance was very, the, um, action was very specific about moving forward, very, very specific. And in December, it was, and I know you got all kinds of papers and all that, but, you know, this is the December one. The, all the financial parts of it are in there, every part of it. And it, it doesn't even account for the whole part about the Love Foundation money, it's only two fifty in there, 'cause that's the only part that I've heard so far. So from my perspective, and, and Andrew, the attorney, and I working to try to make this happen, 'cause there is, there has been a lot of pressure, hurry up. You make a good point. And so we're trying to hurry up. Um, we acted on what you all voted for twice. The December thing, actually, there's language in the resolution just kinda to make sure, you know, here we go, we're doing this, and all the details are there. The contracts, that, you know, no problem with giving y'all a copy of the contract, it's a standard purchase agreement. Um, and we even negotiated, I believe I'm correct, to where the, the money you'd lose if you backed out was prorated on a daily basis. Am I right about that? In the interest of the county. So it's not some long complicated contract. So I guess what I'm trying to say is, you know, in my defense, I acted on what y'all voted to do, and, and you, you're not gonna change your mind on that. Second thing is, the money and all is laid out here. And then the last thing, if I can continue, is, okay, that's one issue, okay? The other issue that everybody needs to consider is this sheet right here. If you look at the blue part of it, and you look down, and I, I, I admit that these things get complicated for people that aren't doing finances all the time. If you move forward with the amounts that you approved already, granted that the city is not gonna participate. So that would require you to scale back, and we talked about that on the record. What happens if the city doesn't participate? We'll scale back, that was said. There's two point two million dollars still there to do phase two projects. So I think, I think the opposition to the, the, the reconsideration of the golf course by some members of council, I get that. But I just wanna make sure we're talking the facts correctly, that there is a decent amount of money left there to do something. And what you all talked about in the work sessions and in every other meeting was possibly some sort of aquatic water pool thing at that time you talked about. And that's down at the bottom. So just, I just wanted, I brought that today to make sure that, that that didn't get lost in the shuffle, regardless of what happens with the other argument. Um, there is some significant money there still. And, you know, uh, I know that, um, I got a copy, an email copy of the governor's speech at inauguration, and he talked about, um, having a big budget surplus and all that. So if we work with the delegation and all that, you might get another pop, and then you, 'cause we got a good one this time. Got two million dollars from interacting with the delegation, and, you know, if you got that again, then you can move forward to your next phases and that sort of thing. But just in closing, and I'll, I'll be quiet, 'cause I'm not a member of council. Um, you voted to do it twice, and the numbers are in there. Um, and that's what we acted on. I guess moving forward, we will be overly specific and very, very detailed, so you all can debate, um, closing dates or whatever you think you need to do on a real estate contract to be able to do the.
Mr. Mullin, you could share that contract with any council member that.
Yeah, I don't see, it's not confidential, you know, y'all's contract.
Mr. Chair. Um, you, you know, we talked about this, and we've been talking about it, and, um, I don't, I don't play golf. I, you know, as far as my part, um, but the county needs the golf course, um, to, to grow the county. We need it now. I don't participate on, on the golf course, I, it's just, I just don't do it. But, um, you know, we did have these meetings, and Mr. Mullin did specify and make sure that we all knew what he was gonna do. He did that in the meeting. And he, we agreed with what he said, we had the four things there that we were gonna do. And he said, "I want to be sure now." In the meeting, he did. And as far as what we agreed on then, we did agree on purchasing this. And, you know, I'm still for everything that we voted on, that's what we should do. Now, if we got to change something along the way, where we don't spend quite as much on it, then so be it, okay? And, you know, I, I don't want to be, um, against anybody, I'm not against anybody. I'm, I'm, I want everybody to get, uh, pretty much what they want out of this. But I don't want us to, to hurt the county, uh, in any kind of way. Um, Mr. Mullin has the contract changed in any way to what we talked about in the meeting.
I mean, I don't have it in front of me, the purchase price is what you see here. It allows for the, for us to back out, you know, if you would have before your votes and pay them the money we gave them earnest money. It has a provision, uh, to allow the people running it now to run it while we hire or figure out how to run it. It has a provision to continue to use their equipment for the year it'll take to get our equipment. And then it just has the regular legal mumbo jumbo checking the title and all. It's a standard, and tell me if I'm wrong, it's a standard purchase agreement. And he, you know, he has, he has it, we can make you a copy. But the purchase price is there, um, we, we paid sixty-five, ten percent down. It has a prorated, like I said, we, we even negotiated that to help out. So, you know, if you, if you would have not voted in November or December, it could have done that. But I mean, we have, there's, there's no interest, there's no reason for me, and it's accusatory, to think we're gonna go in there and pull something wool over somebody's eyes on a contract that you're gonna have, have a copy to see.
Well, and, and that's my thing. As long as what we agreed on is just like that, then, you know, that part, to me, is already voted on. But now, if we need to, uh, take a little bit of money back out of, after we purchased it to put back towards something, we can work that out. I mean, I, I don't see, um, us, we got the contract with the people. We knew, we knew what it was when we were buying, we knew. It's not, you know, it's not new numbers coming up or anything, we had the numbers. And, you know, all I'm saying is, I, I just want us all to work together and get past this point. And if we need to change something, modify, I mean, me personally, I don't care if we put a little more money towards something else or whatever to change, if the consensus is that that will benefit the most people, I, it doesn't matter to me on that. But we did vote on this, and I think that it would, we need to go through it with what we voted on. And, and that's all I'm saying. And if we need to, uh, change something after we purchased this stuff, but we got the contract and we knew what, what the money was then, what we voted on. So, and unless it's different, unless the contract is different, then I see no reason.
And that, uh, I agree with you too, um, Steve, um, that's the only thing, the biggest thing we wanna see, you know, just like the, um, Mr. Chairman say that we would get a copy of the contract. And we, we, in the contract, it have everything that we can actually see, 'cause our memory is not at, at what it used to be. We always refer to it down the road. We have our own contract, we can look at it, okay, say, "Now, this what we said, this what everything gonna be, everything, do our, kit the tires and blow the horn and make sure everything check." And, and we can move forward. You know, and like Steve said, if there's something we need to downsize, we attack that situation when it arise. I don't think, I don't think it's a big headache for, um, Mr. Lane, Mr. Andrew to, um, to give a copy of the contract, and, and we take it home, and, and, uh, we got to the thirty-first, and everything's okay, we don't have to have another meeting, we just wanna see the contract, that's all. But now, on the contract, Mr. Andrew, do the, do the chairman sign, do the minister, do the administrator and the chairman sign? Is it two signatures, is one person's signature?
It's whatever, the county authorized, I think the county authorized administrator to sign, based on the August.
Yeah, the, the purchase agreement had my signature on it, if, if you want the chairman to sign the final.
I, I didn't know, that, I ain't never seen the contract.
Yeah, I mean, 'cause that's what you all authorized.
Really, that's, I, I ain't never seen the contract, so if you don't know, you ask.
That's fine, I don't know, I don't see.
So that's, that's all I'm asking, is it a two-man contract, just one person's signature?
Uh, the August minutes for administrator was authorized to.
Okay.
It might be a good idea in the future to say, the county could say, the, the chairman and the administrator.
Mr. Chairman, I think it's a good practice. You know, what we showing our citizens is that we're deferring our responsibilities. Because if we haven't even had the opportunity to look at a contract, who in their right mind would agree to something when they haven't even looked at the contract? Even if I, if I'm gonna hire a real estate agent to go out and do, you know, my bidding for me, when it comes back to me, I'm gonna look at the contract and make sure that it states exactly what I want it to state. For us to say that we haven't even looked at a contract, haven't even looked at the language, haven't even gauged, you know, uh, 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 the language as the governmental body of Marlboro County, and we not even signing off as, on the contract, as the governmental body of, of, of the contract. Shows the precedent, and Mr. McLeod makes a, a statement that in the future, we might want to, that, that's crazy that we hadn't engaged that beforehand. In the future, we might wanna, uh, agree to have council sign up on something that they're responsible for? Uh, um, I think it's a bad precedent, and it's a bad look to show the citizen that we're not doing our jobs.
Well, the administrator's available to all of us, so we can always ask him for the contract, so.
Well, just a couple, please get his copy out, and, um, I know you had it forwarded, sorry.
There's, I mean, this is like a business, you guys are like the board of directors, so you approve stuff, and you, you could have your chairman of your board, or you could have your C E O sign things. So this is how it works everywhere, and that's fine, y'all can do what you want to with that. My concern is, we are moving forward with what you all voted to do. Now you're turning it into, I did something you didn't approve, that's not true, okay? And we can all argue that in court if you'd like to.
This is not about you, Mr. Mullin, you're making it about you.
I'm speaking, I have the floor, is that correct?
You're making it about you though, it's about council, and it's not about you.
Do I have the floor? My concern is trying to conduct the business of the county with the pressure of hurry up and get it done. We, it's been said, and we wanna hurry up and get it done. And so when the comments came the other night, it's like, oh my God, you know, this, we, I thought we had consensus, the, the actions reflect that. And the actions that were put on the agenda with the finances was done in detail so to make sure y'all saw that. And, you know, you know that privately I have said things to council about, make sure you read the stuff that gets sent to you. So, um, I, I, I think the comments about the contract are fine, I mean, you know, from my opinion of it. But the other part of this, we have to be able to conduct business, and if you all make decisions, and then you wait two months later and you're gonna change your decisions, that's gonna become very difficult. And with this project, particularly with this golf project, um, you also know that I advised you probably privately and somewhat publicly that I wasn't exactly super enthused with it, but that's what you voted to do twice. There are things in here that we have to do now because there's a year lead time, and one of them's carts and equipment, stuff like that. So that's why that number was in there. So aside from the argument today about whether it's gonna happen or not, um, we do need to know what we need to do so it doesn't shut down if we, if we're buying it. 'Cause you don't wanna lose that any momentum you have at all. But I'm here to do what y'all tell me to do, I did this like we've done it, and the people before me in this job do it, and the people in Marion County do it, and Darlington County do it. Um, y'all vote on it, you look at the details, I'll give you that it's nice for y'all to have a copy of that, granted. But, um, there's no situation I know of where individual council members all sign a document, it doesn't, it don't work. I don't know if you're saying that or not, but it doesn't work that way.
Last thing I say is what we approved in November, authorize staff to enter into contracts. We voted unanimously to give him that in the minutes. I want that recorded. We did that, we voted to give him, we didn't assess anything else, we voted to, we voted per the minutes, authorize staff to develop, and it says include entering into contracts. That's, us voted to allow him to do it. If there was any revisions, it should have been stated in the minutes. It was, the question was clearly stated, does anybody, uh, does everybody understand the motion? It was said, yes, if there was anything added or subtracted, it should have been done at that time.
And that was the November meeting?
November meeting.
And that was unanimous, it was unanimous vote. Uh, Councilman Strong?
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to go on the record, as conceding that we, we voted, as, um, like Chairman Stevens stated, that's exactly how we voted. Uh, that is, that is my opinion.
And, uh, you know, we're not, I'm not, I'm not arguing, that's what I'm saying, I'm not arguing, that point, that point is, is, is correct.
You know, the, uh, the question, the question was, do you put all your funds now that the, we know we don't have a fifty-fifty match with the city? Do, can we take some fund away from the two point four million dollar golf course renovation budget? I know we have some things that we have to do, there's no doubt about that, but there's other things that we don't have to do that maybe we can move, and that's where the line.
And again, I mean, that's why I brought this, so you can see this, because I think it's, you know, in my experience in business and being on council and being in what I'm doing now, is everybody, you know, when everybody gets in a dispute, you know, it's all becomes one thing. If you split it out a little bit, sometimes it's easier. So I don't want to get lost in the dispute, that there is still some money there.
Right.
And it's a decent amount of money.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, my thing is, I know all of these things need to be done for the golf course. I'm, I'm just not sure it needs to be done at phase one. We can move it to phase two, then move some things that on phase two and three up. Because now those funds can be used there, you know, that's, that's what I'm saying.
But I.
That's all.
I would suggest, you know, and I was gonna suggest regardless of how this went today, that, you know, now's the time to have a workshop and talk about, um, the things that the city's not gonna do. It's the same thing, I think you're saying, I think everybody's kinda nodding their heads. And at that time, you could look at that, like, for example, I think golfers would tell you that, that you're gonna need to fix the irrigation system at some point, but you're probably at a point in the season that if you started now, you'd disrupt the spring and all that. So that bumps that into another budget cycle. Hopefully another budget cycle where we could get more money from the state or some other source.
But, uh, um, we have not formed a golf committee like we said we were gonna do, right? Because we hadn't had the purchase yet. But as far as renovations and all of that's concerned, I would really like to get their opinion as to the priority of what is, you know, needed.
Yes, sir.
You know?
That's a good idea.
To form the committee, we're gonna purchase the golf course, form that committee, and let them give us, you know, a, a, a path or map of what they think needs to be done in their priority.
I agree with you completely, next Thursday, the, the owners now have asked, and they have organized a meeting of their members and their hardcore golfers. Um, just to come out, and I said, well, you know, I'll come out, we'll, we'll, they just got it lined up, she's gonna put it out, y'all will come out. Certainly have, you know, just stand around and kinda hear what people have to say. And then from that, lead into that. And, and to your point, I mean, I, I'm kinda was sitting there waiting, uh, you, you approved it in November, and then the December thing, if you remember, I did like four, 'cause I was like wary of this. It's like, here you go, here's the money, we're rolling with this. And so once we had that in place and we got through the holidays, 'cause, you know, everybody's, then it's time to rock and roll and do this stuff. So there, not to stay here all day, but there are some things you gotta do if you're gonna do this. Because otherwise, you gotta buy carts, I'm sure, you know, you gotta pack a lunch and hope you get back to the clubhouse, uh, 'cause the carts will break down. And you gotta do some things, but there may be things in there, as you said, that can be done differently. And if the city's not gonna do the splash pad, you wanna do something different or a pool or something like that, it needs to go back up against the, the thing. Because the conversation all along was, buy the golf course. the conversation all along was buy the golf course and make it a recreation complex where you have these other things going on around it so it's not just golf. So I would ask respectfully, they have a work session, um, you know, in the next couple of weeks or whatever and, and I'll bring all, everything and we can go through it. And, and you've got a reason on those city projects definitely to rethink how to do those things. That's very reasonable to do.
Mr. Chairman, um, I agree with, um, Mr. Mullin on, on that issue about having a workshop. I think, um, once, on, you said next Thursday, they probably have a get together?
I think it's, I, I had talked to her today, but I think she's thinking Thursday evening about after.
Once we, um, if, if, is it next Thursday, is a, um, opportunity for us to go and look at the golf course, talk to those that are there and get the intertwined, interaction? And maybe the week after that, we might sit down and, um, do a workshop, looking at the proposal of not that city not involved in anything, maybe might get touch base with the school system. They may say, look, we, we'll do a little something also, you know? But I say, I think that, um, we did say and, and, and we have, I have recalled, um, about talking, that the golf course is going to be the center part, but your other recreational activities will be around, you know, um, from the splash pad to the putt putt and so forth. So, you know, um, I think a workshop would be good so we could continue to move forward. Um, and I think the, the biggest thing why we were here was to make sure that everybody is on opportunity to vote their opinion one last time, to get the copy of the contract and move forward. You know, we wasn't here to waste time, you know? We got more time, we got anything else. You know, so the wasting of time is not a waste of time if you come out positive. And I said, there was, there's some animosity and so forth in the air. So now I think everything is more clear, more understandable. So the meeting was not a waste of time, it was an opportunity for us to get back here, then a little bit, get some clarity. Um, got several golfers in, in, in the audience, you know, that, uh, they, they know where we stand and so forth. So after the next week, if, um, will Mr. Mullin get back in touch with us, they have a drop in, we can sit down and talk and meet some people. I never met the people, I don't know who they is. You know, they come knock the door down.
I kind of like you, but there are a lot of people we all know.
Um, and, um, and, you know, if they probably know us too, you know, we want to give them the check. I go, I want to meet the man who give me six hundred something thousand dollars or her, you know? But anyway, we can have an opportunity to do that, come back with a workshop, um, I'll, I'll have and, and deliver, um, talk about, let's move forward here, let's take away that, and, and let, let, make the pool bigger. You know, there's a lot of things we can spend off on. And we had to do everything in six months. Like Mr. Strongman said, you know, phase one might be phase two now. We get, once we get a golf course, we, we, we had our own spinning wheel. We got our own time. Will we get a golf course locked in and move forward and get our people in place and we move forward, you know?
I do need to be on the record with one thing. You have approved all four of the other items. Same argument is this. So you've approved the, the, the beauty spot road thing with the, with the lake authority and they've agreed to go on half and half. So I'm moving forward with that.
That's a good thing.
Okay. The, uh, the other two things you have approved, but since the city's changed, you know, I think you talked about that. The splash pad and they'd never had talked about the, the final scope or location. So I opened that up. And then the thing on Broad Street, we have a contract to purchase that and I'm, the closing date, what, March probably? I mean, not closing date, but the, I can't remember, but this is not right now. I did want to add thing, something, and I'm just making it longer, I know, but there's comments about, oh, we don't need to do things for tourists. We've lost focus of what we talked about in the work sessions for that. We're not doing things for tourists. We're trying to get the money out of the tourist pockets so you develop businesses and all here. And that is a fairly low cost project in order to get that. But that needs to be talked about again too because if the city's not in it, you're not going to have a very nice situ, you know, it's going to be half as good. But that is, that, we have a, we were given direction to enter into a contract, we did. Um, and I'd rather discuss that, you know, exact session than we have a work session. But I just want to let you know, we're moving on the other things too, but two of them have a reason to revisit.
I'm making one last statement, you know, and I agree with the sentiment of, of, of Councilman Woods. But one thing I do have to note that just because we agree, doesn't mean that we can't come back and, and revisit what we agree. My son is an avid golf player. I have no opposition to, uh, us having a, 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 a golf, a nice golf course in Marlboro County. I'm one of the ones up here, you know, whose son plays golf, who's out there on the golf course, uh, uh, um, a lot. You know, so I have no opposition to it. My opposition is making sure that as council members, that we are doing our responsibility to the people to govern properly and not defer our responsibilities out because we're lazy or, or we just don't want to do the work. And that's, you know, what, what my thing was, making sure that the contractual language is what we needed it, it to say, making sure that we can view the contract, making sure that we doing the thing that governmentally we're responsible for doing. Have no opposition to these projects.